Good afternoon, everyone. Like to welcome you all to Richland County Council's Procurement Work Session, which is scheduled for April 21st, 2022. It is 2:02 PM and this meeting is now called to order. I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues, Councilwoman Gretchen Baron, Councilwoman Yvonne McBride, as well as Councilwoman Allison Terracio, and I believe we also have Councilwoman Ashkeese Newton tuning in virtually. So, without further ado, next item on the agenda is Item 2, which is a presentation from Burr Foreman on LLP.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just briefly, we'll introduce our special guests who are here to assist us with this procurement process. You may recall during the April 5th regular council meeting, as a part of my county administrative report, I communicated that we will be having a procurement work session, which I thought would be beneficial for both our staff and members of county council to attend to get a better understanding of some of the opportunities that we have by way of procurement in the state of South Carolina. So what we have here are some professionals who can assist us with understanding some of those things. And I'll let them talk about the presentation process in terms of how you can receive questions and things of that nature. But with that being said, I'll turn the microphone over to Ms. Elizabeth Crum and let her introduce herself and her team appropriately and let her address the council on this afternoon. So thank you, Ms. Crum, with Burr Foreman for being here, and we'll turn it over to you for the presentation.
You're recognized.
Thank you, sir. Only had a little technical problem with the mic. I'm Liz Crum with Burr Foreman, and I have with me my law partner Pam Baker, also with Burr Foreman. And we have been the, I don't know if you call us the dynamic duo, but we have been working together in procurement. We were just figuring probably be seven or eight years. So if you can't get one of us, you can always get the other. But we really appreciate the opportunity to be here today to talk to you in person and virtually. And what we're going to try to do, we've given you a handout. It's a PowerPoint. It's just kind of a primer on procurement. And you see that green light? That green light was included in the picture because y'all are going to have the chance to go and take off of some different procurement options. But let me go on to the very first part. This is a little bit of history. And I know that my hair got white during COVID, but it's also because I'm a little bit older. I was not 12 when I graduated from law school 49 years ago. So before Home Rule, and I actually worked at the Attorney General's Office before Home Rule, the legislative delegations, as y'all know, actually ran all the counties. They set the budget, they did all the purchasing, and they did it through state laws. And the curious thing is, there were no state laws to speak of governing procurement. You had one statute that said if you were going to purchase something other over $25,000, yes, statewide, over $25,000, you had to get at least three bids. The first procurement protest I ever saw, and I call this the Wild, Wild West, was a very high-ranking South Carolina statewide politician's cousin won the bid to get to supply the highway patrol cars. You can imagine that was a pretty good bid. Well, the protest, there was a protest. The protest was what we used to call, it was to what we used to call the Budget and Control Board, which was the governor, the Chairman of Ways and Means, Chairman of Senate Finance, the Comptroller, and the Treasurer. Was supposed to take place on a Saturday morning, but somehow or other, the protest went away and there was a magical division of the procurement, of the award. Things like that went on with some regularity. I was doing procurement even when I was a law clerk, and they would come to me and say, okay, Liz, explain to us or help us write the solicitation so XYZ gets the procurement. And that, quite frankly, is the way it used to work. Then in 1981, starting in about 1977 or '8, the state realized it really needed to do something with procurement because there was just an, the state began to have more money. We started getting block grants. There was really something to spend that we hadn't had before. South Carolina, along with a number of other states, joined up with the American Bar Association on the state procurement project. And in 1981, we actually adopted the ABA Model Procurement Code with some changes to meet South Carolina's needs. And as part of that adoption in 1981, we said, the legislature said that state government, that local governments had to have procurement codes. But prior to then, I should have said this first, and with the advent of Home Rule, counties got the right to govern themselves. And this was a really new concept in South Carolina. Home Rule gave the counties the authority to actually adopt regulations, resolutions, to purchase on their own behalf, to enter into contracts, none of which you had before. And specifically, Home Rule said that councils shall provide for a centralized purchasing system for procurement of goods and services required by the county governments. Well, you can see how all that is, because it says goods and services. It doesn't include technology. You will find that one of the reasons you should consider upgrading is because, upgrading is wrong, updating your code is because of all of the changes in the methods of procurement and the changes in technology, the way you can streamline purchasing now, which saves your, I'm sorry, I'm supposed to be telling Pam this, and I am just speeding along here. Okay, but it really, you have an opportunity here to streamline your process and not only save money, but make purchasing, the ability to participate in purchasing available to more folks in Richland County. There are purposes behind the modern procurement code, and these purposes, it's the next slide there. There we go. These purposes, they stand the test of time. It's to provide fair and equitable treatment to everyone involved in public purchasing. That's not just the vendors. It also includes the end users being the county or the citizens of the county to maximize the purchasing value of public funds. That's something I know that y'all as elected officials always want to do. To provide safeguards for maintaining a system of quality and integrity. The last thing you want is someone to go behind and say, no, 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 that wasn't run properly. That was given to somebody's friend. If you have the good old Robert Frost poem, "Good fences make good neighbors," a good fence is a good statute. It is a clear statute, and it is appropriately administered. And that way, you can help maintain systems of quality and integrity. One of the other purposes is to foster a broad-based competition within the free enterprise system. You don't want to limit competition to anyone who you, you want competition between everyone who is qualified. We want to develop procurement capabilities that meet the appropriate user need. Some of the, some of the needs that Richland County may have may be very different from my home county of Annenberg. The counties do have different needs, and we'll talk about that in a minute. You also want to increase public confidence in purchasing, and you want to do that if for no other reason that it's taxpayers' money you're spending. And you want to provide clear and defined rules for ethical behavior on the part of persons engaged in public procurement. Let's talk about a little time period here. Okay, the court gets to take my phone from me. I thought I had cut it off. The initial Richland County procurement was passed in September of 1983. And it really hasn't been significantly amended. It's been piecemeal amended, except for really three areas. You have the Division of Small Business Enterprise Procurement. That was in 2016. You've got the expenditure from the penny sales tax in 2017, and the prompt payment requirement, which is what it says, you promptly pay vendors in 2017. One of the things you have is the Richland County Office of Procurement and Contracting Manual, which is a very thorough manual, and we'll talk about that in a minute. But what's happened since the Richland County Procurement Ordinance was adopted is the state has amended and updated, and there really are updates. The State Procurement Code twice, one in 2006 and another in 2019. And both of those amendments took into account the rapidly changing procurement environment. They added things like electronic bidding. They have tried to make sure that the procurement requirements keep up with technology and opportunities. And there are a number of counties in the state that has been, in fact, updated their ordinances and used some of the new options, is what I call them, that are available in the updated State Procurement Code. Let me talk a minute about what you have in your procurement code and some of the definitions. And I'm just going to give you a quick primer on the definition, so you know what we're talking about. Solicitation, you'll hear that word from time to time. There are three primary types of solicitations or source selection. It's how you go about purchasing something. One is a request for proposals. One is an invitation to bid, and one is an RFQ. Generally, the requests for proposals are used with services. If you've got somebody coming in and building a website for you, as just a simple example. The invitation for bid is, if you're buying a highlighter, it's just, this, this, these are the colors we want, and you tell us how much you're going to pay for it. And an RFQ is more often used when you're doing something like an architectural or engineering service. Architects, architects in this state are prohibited by law, for example, from submitting a proposal that includes a price. They will get in trouble. I mean, that's a kind of little-known fact. So you negotiate qualifications with them, and then you talk about your price. And exemption, in the current code ordinance, you have an exemption provision. It simply says that the county can exempt any, county council can exempt any purchase from the procurement process by passing an ordinance. Obviously, you'd have to have the three readings and vote to pass the procurement. We'll get to good practices, but one thing you can do is preset exemptions. And say, if, for example, the library wants to go out and buy a particular book, they don't have to go through a procurement to see who's going to sell them the book the cheapest. So you can preset exemptions, and you can establish it so that if something wants to be exempted, you don't have to go through the ordinance process. That's a time-consuming process, as y'all know. In y'all's code ordinance, bidders and vendors are used interchangeably when responding either to an invitation to bid or an RFP. That can be a little confusing to the bidder community. Request for qualifications, it's not called that, but it's addressed in the professional procurement, but it is called a request for qualifications in the penny tax. So there's a little disconnect. The old 1983 commodity, definition is commodities. That now is a UCC term and not a term that's used in procurement. It would be good services or technology. That would be what your normal vendor community would understand. Professional services is not defined, except for in the SLBE requirements. The vendor local preference, y'all have a good vendor local preference, minority business and small business enterprise sections. And you have a 5% discount for Richland County. But you might want to think about whether you want to also allow a vendor preference, maybe at a lower amount, but for state or United States as opposed to offshore. Right now, you don't have that. The small and local business enterprise, that, that is an absolute gold standard in terms of the precision with which it's written. I, I'm not so, I think it's probably more difficult to administer, and there might be some simpler ways to do that. Now, should you update your ordinance? One of the areas that we would suggest you might want to look at is what we call the method of source selection. I talked about that a few minutes ago, and that's where you act, how you go about procuring goods, services, or technology. You have, I've listed this on page 10. Don't need to go through those again. But if you go ahead and update, you get more flexibility. And what, what can flexibility give you? It can take less time for your staff. You can use a method that is more appropriate for what you in Richland County are trying to purchase, and it can save money. Let me go over a couple of the addition, additional types of source selection that are used in the state code and that a number of other counties also adopt. And some of these you actually have in your procurement manual. So you, it would not be hard to get it into the ordinance. Competitive fixed-price bidding. That's an interesting approach. It allows for multiple sources for the supply. The way the procurement is operated is the purchasing entity would set the base price. You want to buy 100 markers. And you say, we're going to charge you 10, you have to sell them to us for $10. Okay, as long as you, the bidder gets the, meets the price, and as long as the bidder is otherwise responsible, anybody who meets those requirements can be on the vendor list. That gives different people opportunities to participate. Now, just because the minimum price is set at $10, doesn't mean you have to bid to $10. You could bid a lower amount, and so you have an opportunity to get people on the list and to spread competition. And it, Richland is not a small county, either in terms of landmass or population. So it would give, if you've got a Richland County library somewhere that needs something, it gives people an opportunity to purchase somewhere closer. The competitive best value bidding is a takeoff on an invitation to bid. If you use it, the state threshold says 60% of the evaluation points have to be price. The other 40 can be other factors. It could be something like, well, this machine, we bought it at X price, but over the life of the machine, will it operate cheaper? And that could be an evaluation factor. There, there are a number of valuation factors that are listed. I won't go over them all, but it allows you to make price the most important factor. But you might be able to get, in the vernacular, bigger bang for your buck by using additional factors other than price. Competitive online bidding, that's the one, the one, the state has used that some. It's like a reverse auction. You say, okay, we're going to start the bidding at $100. Okay, now who will bid $95? Who will bid $90? They've set it up online so that you can bid in real time. And it's, reverse auction is the best way I know to describe it. But one thing to consider when you're using the online bidding, are you actually going to get the lowest price? The example I would use for you, somebody comes in and they're going to bid on a car. They want to sell the car to the state. And they say in their minds, well, I'm going to do, in my invitation to bid, I am going to say that I would go to $20,000 for this car. Well, if you're doing online reverse bidding and somebody gets down to 22,000, and then they bid 21,000, they're not going to again voluntarily raise their hands and say, okay, I'll drop it to 20 because that was my base, that was my baseline. So, but think about it, there are times that you can use the competitive online bidding. There is the competitive negotiations. That is most often used in a complex, major acquisitions. If that's something y'all are interested in, it's always an option. Just because you have the option doesn't mean you have to use it. And council would be obviously involved in when you're going to do something that major. The negotiations after unsuccessful competitive seal bidding, that's after you have, the example would be after you've done an invitation to bid and all of the prices come in higher than the money you have available. At that point, you can set it up so that you go back to the individual bidders and see if you can negotiate a price that is within the money you have available. Soul Source is exactly what it says. There's only one, one potential vendor for that. And emergency procurements, both of those are in your procurement manual, but they're not actually in the ordinance. You will see that in the ordinance, it says that you have the ability to set up regulations that will give you, that allow you to do emergency procurements. But I couldn't find any regulations. Only what I could find was the ordinance, which hasn't, is something that could be adopted as a regulation. Participation in auctions or sales of supplies from bankruptcy, that's something that the state allows. And that's something that you might want to consider because you know how much money you have. And in bankruptcy sales, you can sometimes get really good deals. And then the cooperative purchasing agreements, Pam might talk about that a little bit, but that is something that is allowed in our code that has not happened very often. But that would allow you to get together with other local governments and enter into a cooperative agreement where one agency would be the lead, but everybody works together. And you pool your resources, and you might be able to actually, you might be able to get more, generally a larger purchase, you can get something a little bit cheaper. So you might be able to again to maximize your dollars. And the one thing I did, I left out, and you have it, but you have the ability to purchase off of state-turned contracts. The, one of, one of the examples is fleet cars. They have printers. They have computers. They have all kinds of information technology and goods and services that you can just go into the state-term contract and purchase off of. Let's talk just a minute about the buy local and contractor preference. Y'all have got, you've got that covered. You've got some good ones, I think Pam is going to talk about. Maybe there might be some ways you can simplify to make it a little bit easier. But when you are looking at local purchases and contract preferences, there are three US Constitution requirements you need to make sure you meet. The first is the Interstate Commerce Clause. As long as the county is operating as what we call a marketing participant, you're a buyer like I'm a buyer. You're just literally spending your money in the market, and you are not regulating the market. You can expend your own funds and the local, you can expend your own funds basically like any other purchaser. But that you have to make, first off, you have to make sure that you've got, it's just your own funds. The second thing is the Privileges and Immunities Clause, basically. And you can't burden a fundamental privilege there. And if you do, there has to be a substantial reason for the discrimination. And if you do, there has to be a substantial reason for the discrimination. And it has to be a reason that that is a governmental purpose. So then the final one is the emergency, I'm sorry, the Equal Protection Clause. Since non-local vendors, they're not a suspect class. There are only four suspect classes. Race, religion, national origin, and alienage. So since it's not a suspect class, equal protection is generally fairly easy. But you just have to show that it's rationally related to a governmental purpose. And y'all's ordinances, one are very well written with that. And two, they track the ordinances of most local governments. So there's a good body of law that you can look to. It's, I'm going to talk about best practices now. And when you have an ordinance that incorporates established law, uses industry terminology and practices, if it's challenged, you've got something to rely on and you don't have to reinvent the wheel. The last time, the one thing you don't want, and lawyers actually love this, but y'all don't like this because it costs too much. You don't want, you don't want to be the one setting a precedent, trying something that nobody else has tried, and it might be absolutely valid. But since there's not a body of law out there, it's not commonly understood. And anytime it involves a lot of money, I will guarantee you, somebody will challenge it. That, so to the extent that you can have, you incorporate and borrow from those ordinances or statutes that have already been challenged and there's a body of law and the vendor and procurement community understand it, it makes not only your purchasing easier, it makes it a lot easier for your staff to administer. If you use established terminology, that helps the vendor community a lot and it helps avoid misunderstandings and confusion. That's something you always want when you're trying to purchase. You need to have the quote, meeting of the minds for your contract. One thing, and this is because your ordinance, the 1983 ordinance was adopted prior to the Ethics Act. It does not incorporate the Ethics Act. That's something you may want to do because I am sure that y'all get ethics opinions all the time. And if you've incorporated the Ethics Act and you get an opinion, that gives you a whole lot more protection that way. Ordinances should mandate compliance, the ordinance should mandate compliance with state and federal laws applicable to purchasing. There is not that specific mandate in your ordinance. Y'all practice that way, there's no question. And the manual has, it even lists a lot of different federal requirements, like the federal purchasing requirements, nondiscrimination, they're all listed in the manual. But it's not referenced in the ordinance. Going back to the uniform list of exemptions, this is something that just makes it, it's, it makes it easy. Works of art, one of a kind, books, maps, periodicals, advertising time. And I don't know how it actually works in practice, but what you don't really want to have to do is go bid, go get a bid on, okay, how much are you going to charge me for a minute on TV? Or how much are you going to charge me for a space in this magazine? That's something that the council knows and when and where they need to make announcements or congratulate or actually let people know what's going on. So there are just a series of things like that you could put in that are automatically exempted. And one of the other things you can do is with an exemption, you can, an exemption section in there. You can also say that by a simple vote of the council, without having to pass an ordinance, you can exempt a specific procurement. There could be a reason that you might want to do that. And you can exempt procurements, for example, if you want to do a pilot project, you don't know if it's going to work and it's exactly what you want to do, but you want to do a pilot project and test run. You could have an exemption for that specific project. That's just another example of when you can use the an exemption by a single vote. Now, we talked about the Procedures Manual. The county has a good thorough Procedures Manual. But you also have a regulation, Regulation 2-623, that says this section authorizes a county to adopt, quote, "regulations to amplify the provisions of this article." But the regulations have to be approved by council. We couldn't find anywhere that the procurement manual has been approved by council. And the manual includes things like sole source, emergencies, requests for qualifications, some of these other source selections that you may want to have. It details how you go about doing construction. It has a lot of good stuff in there. If somebody decided, and I don't want to give anybody ideas, but if somebody decided they wanted to challenge a construction project you've got going now and the county followed the manual requirements, somebody could challenge that manual and say, you didn't have the authority to do that. So it's important that you do, that you have adopted into law the processes that you're following. So I would suggest that you look carefully at the procurement manual to see how you want to, to see what you want to do and how you want to address it. Pam, do you want to talk a little bit about what happens, do you want me to do the do's and don'ts first and then you talk about what happens if, if you don't?
Ms. Crum.
Yes, sir.
Before Ms. Baker begins, I just want to ask whether or not any of my colleagues on council have any questions or would you be willing to entertain any questions if any members of the body have any at the moment?
Yeah, now or whenever you want to ask questions.
Erin, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Crum, I did, and you kind of struck me with your last note of that our manual has not been approved by council. And so given that, it sounds like it's a great opportunity and a great time for us to look at some of these items that you are recommending that we consider. So with that being said, is it your recommendation that we align our ordinance or our policy manuals so that they work in tandem? Is that a recommendation that you would have?
Yes, ma'am. And when you say work in tandem, you're meaning in tandem with the ordinance.
Yes, they will work hand in hand. And then, if I may, Mr. Chair. And then my next question would be to you, you made a statement about the, I like to call it the favor list, but it's the preferred vendor list. And with the preferred vendor list, we do give that preference to individuals or companies in Richland County. And you said it may be a good idea if we look at state vendors or even those that are here in the US. And you mentioned a lower percentage. Is there a recommendation of a percentage?
That, you can look at what the state ordinance does, the state code, it has different percentages. But you may really want to look, because I don't know, I know that you have vendor lists here and you can look and see, excuse me, what your percentages are and whether you want to either raise your local vendor list for Richland County in order to accommodate state and or federally. So, but I think that you, to do that, you would need to look to your local vendor list.
And my last question would be, you spoke about the competitive online bidding process and I've kind of seen it work. But is that, is that, would that be somewhat on the best practice list or something that you would recommend for us to look at? I do, I do think that it has some severe cons than it would pros. Maybe not necessarily getting what you, what you want, the best quality of what you want. But could you speak a little bit more about that?
Sure. That, that's something I think you certainly should look at. And when I say that, you might want to look to see what kinds of things you're purchasing now because you might be purchasing some of the items that you would use a reverse bidder list from the state term contract. And if you're getting a really good price on the state term contract, you might not get as good a price on a reverse bid. But the way I look at it, it doesn't hurt you to have any of these options. What you want to do is have them available and decide on a case by case basis if you want to use them. Because right now, I can't think of a good example of a reverse bidding. With the state, they've even done it on school buses that have 50,000 moving parts, which is difficult. But it's some, it would be a good option to have because it can work.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Additional questions from members of the body? And I know that Ms. Newton is attending virtually, so I'm not able to see if her hand is raised or not.
Mr. Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I was pondering asking a question, but I couldn't pass up that opening. Ms. Crum, you mentioned that it's always great to have options available and that makes sense and that you can choose on a case by case basis. I guess I would wonder, how do you balance having the flexibility, but also at the same time, you don't want everything to be a one-off and have everything require special counsel consideration? So, and maybe it's something you're going to address later if you have any recommendations on, on how you manage that appropriately.
Well, that's a good question. The, one of the things is it's, you would delegate authority. And you can look at it on a kind of general basis with types of procurements. But there would be certain things that the authority would be delegated to the procurement officer, others maybe to the county administrator. And you could do it on a basis of a dollar value or you could do it on the basis of the type purchase or if it's some unique type purchase. So that, that would be how you draft the ordinance itself. And there are a bunch of, I say a bunch, there are probably 10 or 12 different approaches that we've got just in South Carolina that you could crib from and look at for the council to determine how overall it wanted to approach something like this. So you wouldn't have to make it on a case by, on a purchase by purchase basis. Does that answer the question?
It does. Thank you.
Also, I want to recognize some additional colleagues who are also attending virtually. That's Councilman Joe Walker as well as Councilman Paul Livingston. I know that Mr. Walker says he doesn't have any questions. Mr. Livingston, I'm not able to see if your hand is raised or not, but.
I don't have any questions this time.
Okay. Well, I do have a question for you, Ms. Crum. And I believe that Councilwoman Barron kind of, I think she was sort of getting at this earlier. But it has to do with this requirement that council approved the procurement manual. Is that state law or is that county ordinance? I'm looking at Section 2-623.
That's the county ordinance.
County ordinance, okay. Thank you.
And no, the state law does not get into the county ordinance. The problem you'd get into if it's, if you try to enforce laws or you disqualify somebody because they didn't do something in the manual, that would be a grounds for protest because it's not law since it's a manual and not a regulation. It's that type situation we're looking at.
And so as far as you know, Ms. Crum, the manual has not been approved by council. So that needs to come before us, I guess, for approval or vote at some point.
Yes.
Sooner than later.
Yes, sir. That would be a good thing.
Okay, absolutely. All right, thank you. If there are no further questions or any further discussion, Ms. Crum, you can continue on with your presentation.
I'm going to talk about some do's and don'ts and then Pam's gonna give you some horror stories as to why you really need to follow the do's. Your council has, you have a good professional staff and your outline, we've put in all these titles that they have. You don't get these acronyms, the NIGP-CPP, just for showing up. You really have to know your procurement stuff. And so I suggest to you, if you have questions, you don't need to call me or Pam or an outside attorney. You can call your in-house attorney. I'm seeing one of them up there and right down here. And, and Ms. Lidschkin, because they, these folks know what they're doing. If you have a constituent, and this is one that you can get caught totally inadvertently. You've got a procurement going on and there's no way that y'all know, nor should you, every procurement that the county is undertaking. But you have a constituent who comes up and says, I've got this problem and I want to bid on this or I want to sell something to the county. Before you talk to them about it, find out if there's a procurement on the street. I'm going to let Pam tell you the bad things that happen. If you inadvertently, not knowing there's a solicitation out there, start talking to somebody about the procurement or tell them, oh, I'll try to help you. Follow the procurement processes that the county has adopted. That sounds simple. It's not always simple. And if you have a question about your processes, ask staff. Don't. Don't talk to a vendor about a solicitation after it has been issued. Don't let a vendor talk to you after a solicitation has been issued about that solicitation. If a vendor tries to talk to you after you've told them not to, tell the county administrator or the procurement director. If you get involved with a vendor after a solicitation has been issued, there are potential consequences. Pam?
Oh, and many of the cases that Liz and I have worked on together, we like to avoid these situations, but you know, the consequences are you, you get in a situation where, you know, maybe, you know, this is the vendor that, you know, is most qualified or the best because, but because there's been this inappropriate communication or contact, you're in a situation where you have to disqualify them. And at that point, if then the procurement, the total procurement is at risk, you may have to start over. It's a very costly process. And you could find yourself also in the midst of an ethics complaint, which, you know, the negative publicity and the cost of having to deal with that is, you know, very damaging. You could find yourself being called as a witness, you know, against, you know, for example, if you're the person that had the inappropriate contact, then this vendor who has been disqualified could call you as a witness in his case against the council. You never want to be in that, that situation. And ultimately, the solicitation, you know, could be canceled and you have to start all over. And doing, especially if it's a complicated, a complex acquisition, doing the RFP process or the RFQ, that process can take time. You're not talking about weeks, but you know, months and several months. And, you know, we have both worked on matters where, you know, circumstances like this have come about. And anytime you have to disqualify a vendor, you're also opening yourself up for a protest because nine out of 10 times, they, they're not going to want that on, you know, that, that has to be reported when they do subsequent procurements that they've been disqualified. So they're not just going to sit idly by and let that, that occur. So it's just always, I think, best practice to make sure to have that language in whatever solicitation you issue and make sure it's clear to all, to all vendors, you know, if they want to participate in a process, then they have to follow the no communication. You know, if they want to participate in a process, then they have to follow the no communication rules. And so it's just good to have it in your ordinance, as well as in the solicitation and your procedures manual, which I think it probably is. And then, you know, one of the other things we didn't really talk about a lot in this presentation is the protest process, because that would probably take a whole day in and of itself. But, I mean, that's the place where you never want to end up when you have a solicitation because why would you want to have to deal with, you know, calling witnesses? Well, just coming up with a panel to review it is even difficult. So I think that, you know, the best practices are to just avoid any of the don'ts. Keep an arms length, make sure you're not, you know, having any inappropriate contacts or even discussing the procurement, you know, while it's, before it's been awarded. Yep, my brain is blanked. I know we talked about wanting to have a deal with best value.
This is one other thing with regard to your procurement panel. We didn't go into that. You've got it set up. But one of the things you have is that you say that there are five different members, and they each have to get into a, fit into a category. One of the things about the categories is it makes it really difficult. It's already difficult enough to try to get people to fill these positions. Because it's, I've actually served on boards, and it's thankless. And the fact that y'all are doing what y'all do, people don't appreciate you enough for everything y'all do. But if you take away the qualifications, like you have to have one from industry, you have to have one from construction. The state has done that, and a lot of other local governments have done that. So it would make it a little bit easier for you to get people to fill the position because, so that you have a standing or sitting procurement panel. Because right now, you don't. I don't even know if it's because last time I checked, there were some vacancies. I don't know if there are still vacancies or not. But it would make it easier. And what you need is good people who will listen, because you can always get subject matter experts to help. You don't have them in-house, for that matter. So that's just, that's another thought. And if y'all have got other questions, that the, you've got an opportunity now, and you don't have to reinvent the wheel. I mean, you really don't. It's, you can look at Aiken or Charleston. You can look at your own procurement manual. And you can take parts of these and put it into your ordinance and then adopt by regulation. And it just will make, I think you'll have the opportunity to have a modernized, updated manual or ordinance that allows the county the opportunity to take advantage of new types of purchases, to reduce costs, and to be in a situation where a vendor comes in to Richland County. And so, yeah, we recognize this. This is the way you do things. And they actually enjoy bidding in Richland County. And I think they do because you've got a great staff, but you just make it easier for everybody that way.
I think the benefit of adding some of the other source selection types to your code would, for example, if you have a solicitation and it just really is based on getting a quantity of something for a specific price, you know, that's one thing. But if it's a complex acquisition where the qualification of the vendor matters more, then it really is, it really would be helpful to have the type of source selection in there that weighs qualifications over price. And that way, you're not stuck with having to take the lowest bidder. So, you know, that's why I think that having the flexibility to do that is good. And, you know, the council, you know, you would decide whether, you know, if you're looking at software or if you're looking at some type of complicated vending system, you know, you might care more about the qualifications of the vendor than you do what the ultimate price might be. And that's something we've been hearing later is best value to the state. And, you know, sometimes best value is not getting the lowest bid, but best value is getting the right qualified vendor. And so that's become a term in a lot of protests that we've been, or cases we've been dealing with lately.
Have any more questions? We're happy to try to answer them.
Ms. McBride, you're recognized, and then Ms. Barron.
Thank you for, but. My question is, in terms of the manual you're speaking of, would the procurement panel be a part of that manual?
No, ma'am.
Okay. So in terms of looking at best practices in developing and using a procurement panel, would you have that type of information on best practices? And I'm talking about national best practices, not just within South Carolina, because the procurement panel is somewhat different from the overall process because we don't have to follow this as much the state guidelines.
Yes, ma'am. The state guideline actually is based on the American Bar Association model policy that's used mostly countrywide. So that's a good best practices type thing to look at anyway. So, but with regard to the procurement review panel, the only time they would actually come into play would be if there was either a protest. Somebody says, "No, you should have awarded it to me," you should, and not to you. So the procurement panel would come in there, and they would come in if there's a contract controversy between somebody the county has awarded a contract to versus. And they're saying, county says, "No, you didn't perform." And they say, "Yeah, we did, and you owe me this much more money." So that's the only time they come into play.
Okay. So I'm speaking of when we evaluate the request that we receive coming in. When, who evaluates the reviews of the proposals that we receive? That is the panel I'm speaking.
Okay, that would, I'm getting my, that would be the evaluation committee. I was being too literal on that.
Okay.
But, and that would be set up under your current ordinance. I think it's the county administrator that sets up the evaluation panels right now. And that's usually a function of finding people who are, when I say subject matter experts, they know, they know the qualify, if you're going to do a computer, they know about computers, and they can tell you whether one has better than the other. And that's what you would use for your evaluators.
And so in looking at best practices throughout the United States, some people use evaluators in-house, some use external evaluators, and some use a combination of.
Yes, ma'am. That's accurate, and that's exactly, y'all could do the same thing.
Ms. McBride, before I get to you, Ms. Barron, I believe that Mr. Brown wanted to speak to, I guess, the point raised about the evaluation panel?
No, I just had a question also, Mr. Chair.
You had a question as well?
I can wait my turn in line.
Okay, absolutely. Well, Ms. Barron, you're recognized, ma'am.
I definitely can yield to Administrator Brown.
Thank you, Ms. Barron. I'll go ahead and go, Mr. Chair. I won't make it go back and forth. So one of the things that, Ms. Crum, that we've talked about here a couple of times is our team, a lot of times, we do focus on qualifications. And a lot of the questions that we receive just over time is, why can't we focus more on price? On page 11, you mentioned competitive best value bidding, which you say allows for factors other than price to be considered. But you mentioned that 60% of the, I guess of the scoring has to involve price.
That's the state law.
Right.
Y'all could change that because you have all kinds of. I'm sorry. Y'all, I was trying to look at you and got too far away from the mic. Y'all can change that 60%. You are not required, if you borrow something from the state, to borrow it exactly. The courts, all the statement law says is appropriate practices, appropriate competitive procedure practices. So you could say, "Richland County, we're better off doing it 50% or better doing it 65%." It's the concept of using price versus and qualifications.
Okay, so, and I raised that for the purpose of the council. So as we go forth and develop these things, if those are, when we do that type of sourcing, that will be something for us to consider. So you've kind of asked that question, and now we know kind of what that looks like. One quick follow-up to that, Mr. Chair, and then I'll be done. You mentioned that there are also other factors that could be considered. Now, is there like a list of factors somewhere that we would pull from? Or is it just something that the organization would determine what factors are?
There are a list of factors in the state code. I think Charleston has a list in their code. And we could look at like the ABA to see if they had additional factors or if there's something that's basically, excuse me, unique to Richland County. The example of some of the other factors are, let's see. The operational costs the state would incur, in this case, the county, if the bid is accepted, the quality of the product or service or its technical competency, reliability of delivery and implementation schedules. In other words, this is a vendor that has been reliable in the past or hasn't been reliable in the past. Maximum facilitation of data exchange and system integration. I'm not even sure what that means. That's way above my head. But warranties, guarantees, return policies. There's a list of about 16 of them in here.
Okay.
So there's a good list, and there are others that you could consider.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome, Mr. Brown. And Ms. Barron, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one final question. And I will say that just as a local business owner, I find this quite intriguing and grateful that the county is really taking a look at how we do business. So I really appreciate this. So my question would be for, when we look at how council can help our staff or in the procurement process, because many of our directors are here. And one of the things that I noticed in our last budget cycle, although I was fairly new, I did notice that, you know, there were lots of, lots of things that we purchased throughout the county. And it just would seem that perhaps if we could all purchase them together or different practices, just having that best practice of if you're ordering paper, this is what you should do. If you're, you know, looking to, you know, do computers, and I know we, our computer setup is a little bit different, but that's just an example, to do this, just to somewhat help really streamline in our process to help with eliminating waste throughout the county. Is that something that is recommended? Or, and if it is, is it something that, you know, perhaps you could assist our team with developing so that we can, again, look at eliminating waste throughout the county?
Yes, ma'am. That certainly is. And I think that some of that's in the manual right now. So I think that looking at what all you have, you've got a really good beginning, and you can build on that to centralize, identify those things where you can centralize and save money. And some of that could even be through the state term contracts.
Additional questions from the body or comments, or from Mr. Brown and one of your team? Mr. Livingston, Mr. Walker, Ms. Newton?
I would just say, Mr. Chair, just to wrap up on our end, one of the things I did highlight as a part of that administrative report as well is, this would be kind of the initial part of that process. This both culminates with us addressing some of the motion that was brought up by Ms. McBride and going forward to some additional steps we're going to take related to procurement, equity and inclusion in our processes as it relates to procurement and other county matters. But our plan to, from here, is for us to review the ordinance. It's sort of kind of as was recommended here, but we were already going to be looking at that, updating that where that's appropriate, which would include conversations with council, so that ideally we can have an item to you that you could then adopt that represents an updated ordinance with current procurement practices that are approved by this council that represents these various initiatives to include local minority, diversity, equity, and inclusion, and any other areas that represent the direction that we're going in. So this was kind of the first step. This is not the last thing we'll be doing, but we thought it would be helpful to bring someone in just beyond our staff to kind of communicate some options and opportunities that exist and kind of how we get there. So that's all I want to add, Mr. Chair, as a next step for our staff, what you can expect to see and be a part of as a council.
Well, thank you, Mr. Brown. Thank you for your efforts, as well as the efforts of your staff. Also, I want to thank Ms. Crum, as well as Ms. Baker. I mean, I know you all are very busy lawyers. Just as you thank council for what we do, we certainly would like to thank you all for taking the time out of your busy schedule to come here today and just enlighten or better educate council on the procurement process. So we really appreciate you all being here today, as well as the presentation.
Mr. Chair, I do have one question I just thought of. I need to ask.
Oh, you're recognized, Mr. Livingston.
Oftentimes, I would have a vendor come to me and simply say, you know, once they get the request for qualifications, they're arguing, say, "I had a conversation earlier, these qualifications are written specifically for a particular vendor." You know, how to avoid that and make sure you don't get in trouble with someone alleging that the qualifications are written for a specific vendor, because that happens.
Yes, sir. In fact, that was what I was referring to in the old days when they came and said, "Make sure you draft it that way." But in your, in any RFP you put out on the street or invitation to bid, there should be a specific section that says, "If you think this is written for a specific vendor, you need to go to the procurement director or the procurement officer who sent this particular solicitation out and complain about it." Not to come to the council, but to come to the procurement specialist who sent it out there. And there generally is a provision in invitations to bid or requests for proposals like that. And that could be one of your standard clauses that you put in.
Good. I'll follow on that one.
Anything else, Mr. Livingston?
I'm fine, thank you.
Okay. Now, Ms. McBride, you're recognized.
This is a low hand up. Following Mr. Livingston. Do we have anything in our manuals regarding procedures for disqualifying problem vendors that we dealt with?
Got a question for the administrator?
Let me be smart when I answer this. So number one, we do have a qualified person, Ms. Jennifer Ladishkin, who I'd like to thank also for assisting us with this. But the ordinance does speak to some issues when you, when you can do that. But I think that that was also a section where we needed to update to make sure we know what that means. But, Ms. Ladishkin, if you want to.
She's here, Ms. Ladishkin. If you would care to speak to that, please.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, but you know, Ms. McBride and Ms. Ladishkin, she was just there. She's got me. I would like to hear from her if that, I know it's your question, but I would love to hear from Ms. Ladishkin.
She would love not to do it, Mr. Chair.
She'd rather not do it, okay, then. That's fine.
I will add to that, though. One way you can also deal with that is when you have a source selection that takes into consideration qualifications, because then you can ask for references and that you can, you can check the vendor's conduct in other procurements.
Ms. Newton has her hand up. Ms. Newton, you're recognized.
Thank you. I was going to let it go, but Ms. McBride asked a question that was near and dear to my heart. And so I'm not sure if this is a question for Burfordsman, the administrator, or procurement. But looking at vendors and past service, the county ran into a situation where there were many complaints about a vendor, but those were going to our ombudsman's office. But those complaints weren't necessarily making it to our procurement office. So it created this situation where people who are evaluating contracts may or may not know about issues that the county is having. And so my question is, does our manual currently address that to make sure that we are incorporating all of the information that we're receiving from the county across different sources? And if it's not, what are the best practices? And what are the steps that will happen to make sure that those? And what are the steps that will happen to make sure that those are incorporated? So, you know, the right hand always knows what the left hand is doing, so to speak.
Sure, if that's for Burfordsman, Ms. Ladishkin, you got your opportunity.
Thank you so much, Jennifer Ladishkin, procurement manager. And I believe that Mr. Brown was kind of alluding to it before. We do have something in the ordinance that speaks to vendor service levels, but it's very abbreviated, not very specific. And so that's something that, you know, that in order to ensure that, you know, we're not challenged on these types of things that we probably really need to beef up and be clear about specifically, you know, service level implications and quality of service and things like that.
Thank you. And this is Shakies again, if I may. One question is a policy question, but related to that is also a process question. Because if, if there's a great policy that says we're going to take into account service levels, but there's not a process that ensures that that information comes, say, for example, if the ombudsman's office gets 5 million complaints about something, but there's not a mechanism to communicate that information to procurement, then the policy isn't really helpful. And so I'm asking about how we bridge that gap.
As part of the e-procurement system that the county purchased last year, we have a supplier evaluation tool. And we will be rolling out that tool. And what that tool allows for is for each contract, for us to set up feedback mechanisms. And that information is then sent to the departments, which are typically the ones who are receiving the ombudsman's information regarding complaints. And so hope, the hope is that that mechanism allows for the departments to filter that information back to procurement through that supplier evaluation tool.
I see, Ms. Newton?
Thank you.
Okay. Well, then being no further business,